So I'm thinking maybe we should just instead of like, um, we'll go through all this sort of talked about changes and maybe just. Instead of a formal vote on each change, just say okay, agree, agree, and then we'll say we'll vote on. All of that changes as a resolution, does that sound okay? Um, yeah, we do have a second or so we have council.
Sorry, how does it read again?
The resolution. So um, that this council proves the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Nipigon Canteen Agreement as recommend. Yeah, we don't want to have as recommended by the committee, um, agreement. Um, with the following change, as recommended with the following changes, right? With the following changes as. As stated by council.
Or as greeted by them.
Okay, so the first, the first one will go from start to finish. So are we, are we okay with just changing it to tender? That it's not confusing to the the bidders? Okay, so. It's not, so what would we change it to? Request for proposals, okay. Whatever that, yeah, okay. So change document title to request. There's so many different ways of saying things. Um, so and the deadline needs to change. It's currently a September first. Do we think it would be reasonable, Linda, might you, you might know this, to have if. Let's say it got out this week, so by September first, would it be reasonable to receive by September fifteen? What's the day of the week of that?
I would try and go a little later, just because.
Give extra time.
Yeah, um, they got these.
Well, I guess, yeah. I mean, it's. It's not a complicated thing, and you like usually when we put something out of a secure country at the most strict. And those are like extended up proposals, right? The fifteenth, if we can get this out Linda by Wednesday or Thursday and then say by the fifteenth. Which should give two weeks, or maybe by the, maybe eighteenth, because there's a holiday trip, right? People aren't gonna wanna work this weekend. On this. So the eighteenth, and that would give like two and a half. Okay, deadline to Monday, September eighteen.
Never give a chance for it to be in the paper.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. And then, um, contract instead of concession. So she just changed her contract uh, instead of concession. And I can't attach to RFQ, so on the second page, we're changing that to RFP, just to be. Request for proposals. Okay, so underlines here payment of lease, must be paid attention for looking in monthly and then do the first of each month, that's just a thing, right? Okay, and then on the last page, it could be changed to proposal, insert quotation call. Um, to accept the highest or. Okay, so it should be or there. Okay, so and then that's just sort of the the wording stuff. For um, under period of operation. We'll have option one, this is, this is if everyone agrees. Option number one would be part-time operation, and I have the wording for this too, if you want this.
That was my. There's no, doesn't have that on there.
Yeah.
What they're bidding on is that option one, option two.
We'll have to put that in if if we agree on the option, okay, so. Option one is a part-time operation, and it reads this option will require the successful bidder to operate and is limited to. Up to five hours per day, Monday through Thursday during hockey practices, for example, three through the eight, three to four to nine, so that the times are negotiable. I know that some of the canteen operators would shut down by eight thirty because no one's buying brides and stuff, they're all kind of leaving. Um, some of them prefer to stay open till ten, it's it's negotiable, I guess.
Those are the main hours.
Yeah, and then during junior B games, usually Friday evenings, hockey tournaments, and any special events that may arise throughout the season. So the, just things that are in my mind here, like um, last year we had a girls' January hockey, there's the. Curling championship, there's anything that happens to come up. So that covers that, that covers um, events.
Any special events, that's what it says.
Yeah, so during junior B hockey games, hockey tournaments, and any special events that may arise throughout the season. So are we good for that? Okay, proponent. Okay. Option two, full-time operation, this includes operation as per option one, but in addition allows the operator to open as many hours as they choose. Providing the hours of operational line with those of the Nipigon community center. That's pretty straightforward. Option one and two addition. Well, I can just get this. Um, and then. So as Gail just said, that would have to be reflected in the the bidding bit, so. So the final page, quotation page would have to include the um, options.
Uh, I would do something like this.
Yeah, option one, part-time, this is the bid, and option two. Yeah.
The check mark on which box I'm talking about, right?
Okay, um, and then we go to the um, requesting for the um, or just asking about having the. The different um, food options. Where is that? Oh, here we go, sales and products on page one. Would we like to add, um. Peanut free, so right now it reads due to the increase in individuals with peanut allergies, consideration of peanut-free food would be appreciated along with. Um, offering healthy options. We, are we gonna add gluten-free vegan and?
Just, just put healthy options.
Healthy options. Okay.
And make sure it's denoted as suggestions.
Okay.
It take peanut out due to the increase in individuals with allergies.
With allergy.
Consideration of allergen-free food. And then you got your gluten.
Yes, that's perfect. Okay, we'll do that. Allergen-free food would be appreciated along with offering. And um, councillor Sakamoto, are you okay with that? It doesn't mention like gluten and all that specifically, but it just talks about allergens.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, that's a little simpler. Okay. Okay, page one, um, including allergens. Instead of peanuts.
You gotta. Little one year this.
So, here we go, guys. Um, resolution one ninety-eight, twenty twenty-three, moved by councillor Hart, seconded by councillor Westtaver. That this council proves the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four uh, Nipigon Canteen Agreement as recommended by the recreation. Nipigon Recreation Committee with the following changes as agreed to by council. Um, change document title to request for proposals, deadline to Monday, September eighteenth, contract instead of. And this goes through all the words, contract instead of um, um, what was it? RMP. Um, proposal. Yeah, change the, all the termin- terminology to RFP and proposal as opposed to agreement or. Um, and proponent. Um, option number two and option number two addition as per discussion, um, final.
That on here, on the.
Final quotation, option one and two, find last page.
Yeah, last page of the form of quotation.
Okay, so addition of option one and two on last page.
Know that they don't have it for both options.
New points.
Page one, including uh, include allergens and uh, instead of peanuts specifically. The minimum bid, right? That's important, okay, so um. Minimum bids. And the minimum bids were five seventy-five. And a thousand, and I think that's also in this document here that is. Yeah, that'll be in that piece of paper here, then I'll include that with here, so you get the wording right. Or it doesn't have to be exactly the same. So the minimum bids, the difference is part-time and full-time? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Part-time. So I think that was everything then discussed.
But we're not gonna put that on there.
Yeah, it'll be in instructions, clearly, clearly stated, so. Change document title, request proposals, deadlines to Monday, September eighteenth, um, contract, change all words to refer to proposal. Um, or proponent. Option number one and two addition as per discussion, um, add, um. Uh, option one and two on the last page with the quotation, page one include allergens instead of peanuts specifically and. Add minimum bids of five seventy-five for part-time and one thousand for full-time, yeah, okay. All in favor? Oh, Kathy?
I, in favor, sure.
Yeah. Favor, okay, all in favor. And Carrie. Thank you, yeah, that was a long one. Discussion for sure.
So somebody might have to sit down with you.
Yeah. So the direction to staff is to have that out by the end of the week as quickly as possible. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, number four, twenty twenty-three Chamber Awards. Um, so we have. We did have, we did ask at our last meeting um, to defer this because we needed more information. A about the awards and B about the um, um, about the, how the chamber is being run in general. So we did have received um, an email from Levina Collins today, the president of the um, awards or president of the chamber.
And that was in the package.
Yeah, it was separate, yeah. So do we have any uh, discussion? We do have a resol- a resolution here to. Approve the sponsorship for twenty twenty-three Chamber Commerce Awards, we don't have an amount filled in there yet, but the. Amounts are a thousand, five fifty or two fifty. Do we have any discussion on?
So the total awards I'm gathering is eighteen, from eighteen hundred? Uh, they have like.
The sponsorship is gold sponsor, which is one thousand.
Right.
A silver sponsor, which is five hundred and fifty dollars, and a bronze sponsor, which is two hundred and fifty dollars, and she was asking uh, Nipigon for a thousand. Uh, dollars. So do we have any discussion on uh? On this, um, maybe I should, resolution first, and so this is one ninety-nine, twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor Hart, there's no second or as yet, that this council proves a sponsorship request for twenty twenty-three Top of Superior Chamber of Commerce Awards, and you know of. Discussion. Maybe we can start with Kathy, because I tend to forget the person who's online. Kathy, do you have anything to say?
Oh, don't start with me. I wanted to hear what everybody else had to to say with this. Um, maybe I missed the last email, I did really hadn't seen anything new yet.
Hey. We do have, um, so we just, we, like I said, we have the information on the sponsors, we have a a list of the executives. Which is Levina Collins, President, Vice President Marvin Broton, Secretary Ahmad Gayani. Treasurer Laura Lynch, Director Doris Sod, Doris Sodcheck, Chief Marcus Hardy, and Shannon Michelle Ruth from Red Rock Indian Bend as well. We do not have any minute, I believe we requested the minutes from the last um, AGM. Which from what I understand is supposed to happen every, every, before every June of every calendar year. She did respond, I think, saying that they they did not have their AGM yet, and it was going to be happening. In December or November or something like that.
Three weeks after.
Oh, after. Sorry, yeah. Um, does anyone have any?
I've been to those, they're actually quite well-received in the community and encompasses the whole area, not just. Nipigon, it's uh, business in Dorian or business. Yeah, any place that. First, I was just wa- warning some clarification about the selection vote that worked, but it looks like it's well-covered by their committee. For both a, but I don't know how the intake works, but there's obviously.
There's no information here about how, like, from what I understand, I, there, in the past, there has been nomination forms. Sent out to, to, or available everywhere where people can nominate.
Yeah.
So there's been no nomination, but it looks like it's just.
Taken, it looks like she's just taking. Anybody who's been in the business for ten years and automatically giving them an award based on.
Then, then they do like we do, from what I understand, is in those businesses, they they pick. Like a well-known, well-run.
They're not. No, it's gonna be totally different this time, there's no, there's no special awards, it's basically if you've been in business ten years, twenty years, thirty years, forty years, fifty years.
Or they change.
And it's uh, in addition, it's municipalities, it's the museum, it's. See, like to to me, or sorry, I'm good, I should talk last.
I think you were going along.
Yeah, Gail? Is that my fault?
Yeah, um, that's what, that's what it seems to be, there's, but there is the process of, um. I guess, uh, at one time anyways, it was picked like a project.
Yeah, nomination.
Yeah, but it is nice now that they're, they're going to do Betty Bril and to recognize, you know, even the municipality for. So I gue- I guess it changed the format, and I guess that's a prerogative.
Councillor McKenzie, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Um, like the council in the past has supported the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
And I think it's a good idea to continue to do, to ju- to do so, I think kind of considering, uh. You know, uh, what's been discussed, uh, right now, I would suggest maybe we go for a five hundred dollar. Um, you know, contribution, but with the, with the provision that, you know, we'd like to, like in the future. We'd like to be more informed as what's, what's happening at the chamber. We'd like, they could be more transparent, we could get a copy of the AGM, we can find out all these questions out, all the awards are given out and. You know, so that we feel really confident in supporting the chamber. Um, right now, you know, and we had COVID, and I can understand things kind of, kind of went awry a little bit. And I think they may be struggling now, but I, I, that's what I would suggest, that we uh, we uh, we donate five hundred dollars. And then ask them, you know, for future years, um, that we would, you know, in order to make us more comfortable with. Our decision and supporting that we get, we get more information in a time when matter and, you know, that we're fully abreast of what's happening.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Sakamoto, do you have anything to say, or you're last now?
Who was first?
Oh, she said she wanted to wait till last, okay.
Did Glenn go? I didn't hear Glenn.
Yeah, everyone went except for myself, so you're, you're next.
I would. I would support what, what. Um, councillor McKenzie just said.
Okay.
What has it been like, as I said, what in the past, down there, new to, they, they always just do a thousand, 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 two?
You know, I can't remember ex- exactly, I'm sorry, Linda, do, do you remember? It's been years, it's been five years since I.
They did offer support in other ways as well, right? I think it was probably around five hundred, don't commit a record, but yeah. And we haven't had it for years, so.
Right.
Councillor.
Yeah, sorry, just, so with five hundred dollars, that allows us a number of representatives to go, right?
Yeah, it says four free tickets, logo on the program and on the rotating screen, award name after your company, award presented by the children. For, I would suggest a couple council members and a couple of staff, if they're interested in going, could, could go, there's a dinner, if that's what we decide. Um, so I'll just have my say real quick, I, um. I do agree councillor McKenzie. I didn't, I, that wasn't my opinion at the start, but I, I think what councillor McKenzie had to say makes sense. I think moving forward with both the sponsorship, and I know we did agree to a membership. And we did pay a membership on this year for them, and so, yeah, maybe along with that, we do, we do the silver sponsorship. And but moving forward, if we are continuing to be a member next year and continuing to support something like this. As members, we should receive um, invitation, the town and um, the the council in our package should receive. Um, an invitation to the AGM, and you should be receiving packages with the financials and all that kind of stuff, everything that goes with an AGM. And an opportunity to vote on the executive and all that, everything that goes with a, uh, an incorporated nonprofit. Um, but let that just be said and and sent to to them with the information and and understood that moving forward with any more asks. That that is essential, that we be. Kept up, up to speed on that this organization is being run properly and according to their bylaws and all that. Okay, so. And then I would suggest anyone who's interested in going, talk to Linda. Fourteen? I'm not quick.
Who they contact for these, is it every business?
Well, the Chamber of Commerce is supposed to be for business, right?
Yeah.
Yes, which is, which is again, the whole, we could get into it again, but they're focusing on municipalities and the, and the mu- uh, museum and all those types of places. Is kind of, um, that's why I'd like to know about what their plan is moving forward, there should be a focus on this, and that's the other question, what I do with the money.
Yeah.
In the past, it's been a fundraiser for the chamber to to do things like the shop local that they did at Christmas time a couple of years ago and all that kind of stuff. So that's mine, yeah, that's, and that would go along with what.
Or fundraiser that gets the community together and makes an event of it, and it's fun.
So we have resolution number one ninety-nine, twenty twenty-three, moved by councillor Hart, seconded by councillor McKenzie. That this council proves the sponsorship request for twenty twenty-three Top of Superior Chamber of Commerce Awards in the amount of, we're gonna do. Five hundred and fifty dollars, which is the silver package. Sorry, I guess I said five hundred, but it's five fifty on the package there. All in favor? Uh, and Carrie. Okay, arts program facility coordinator. This is resolution number two hundred. Twenty twenty-three, uh, moved by councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor uh, Westtaver. That this council approves that the township will provide the wages not covered by the New Horizons Grant and increase the arts programmer facility coordinator hours from ten. Hours per week to twenty hours per week. So discussion.
I think we discussed that for.
Councillor uh, Sakamoto, any discussion on your side?
Um, this is the end charts coordinator.
Yeah, sorry, I should be talking louder.
Yeah, in my, my experience with the ten hours last time was really not enough. Uh, even being, um, I put on a, a one class while that was happening. Um, you can't expect that person to be checking their texts and emails when they're not getting paid. And to try and do that with instructors, trying to get set up and get into the building and asking questions, it it really didn't work. Even twenty hours is gonna be. It's a little challenging. But if if we want the programs, so I say minimum twenty hours, uh, I didn't do the math, cause my COVID brain just couldn't go there. Um, but I see that the the funding was from March, so if we have the the funding to do twenty hours. If you have the funding to do more, do more hours.
So this is just for, just to go up to to twenty, and so that that can be advertised, and hopefully we can get. Um, applicants, if interested, yeah. Okay, so um, that this council proves that the township will provide the wages not covered by the New Horizons Grant and increase the art programmer facility coordinator hours from ten hours. Per week to twenty hours per week, all in favor? And Carrie. Okay. I'll have to fight for that job. Okay. Um. So the tourism development fund. Well, just real quick, guys, um. This is something, and there's a really quick turnaround, I believe I only got the email about this. My work there. This, what I was thinking for this one, let me just explain why I have that in here, it's not, there's no capital funding for this, okay, it's just for um. Development and product and things like that, um. What I was thinking was some kind of, um. That this might fit for the uh, um, marina, a marina plan. I keep calling it an asset management plan, but I think if we call it like a marina development plan, basically that takes into consideration or docking. Anything that we want to do with the marina that coincides with what Parks Canada is doing. Um, what we want to do with the marina building, all that kind of thing, but we, we, we need, we need a plan to be able to present to. Funders and investors, whatever, that might want to have businesses down there or what have you. Um, but I think this might be a good opportunity for it, and I think it's fifty percent. Um, up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And you do have to make an appointment with um, with the um, funding person, just to go through and make sure that that's something that would. That would fit, um, but I would just like to, if. It's fast turnaround, but to to direct staff possibly to to look into it and to try and get something in. For that time, and I, I do, I do know some, um, but there are some individuals out there that. Complete grant applications for a living, um, contract, so if that is an issue for time. Then that's a possibility for sure, so. Um, are we, are we okay with directing staff to look into that fund?
Yeah, I, I, I highly agree, I, I think maybe we might want to rename it like something like Marina waterfront development.
Sure.
So they were not specifically targeting just the marina, I know when the. When I was running for council, I had a lot of people talk to me about the waterfront development, you know, the the docks and, you know, marina. You know, and the landings and the maybe swimming and Parks Canada and all that kind of stuff, so I think if we maybe broaden the scope a little bit. Include waterfront development, not that we're gonna put condos down there necessarily, but, you know, just to develop, develop the leisure. Uh, spectrum.
Okay, yeah, so we're good with. Okay. Question. Linda, Linda has a question, yes.
I'm just wondering, um, I, cause I didn't get a chance to go through it.
Yeah.
Um, is there a timing that you have to complete it to?
By March thirty-first. So not only is it a quick. Turnaround for the application, but it's also a quick turnaround for the project, however. If the consultant that, if we get the funding and we end up doing it, the consultant we hires from the, from the area like Thunder Bay, they'll be familiar, we give them the, uh. Former waterfront development plan that was done back, back in, what was it, twenty twelve or twenty ten or something like that, so they have the lay of the land, what was done before and all that kind of thing. I think it's possible to have it, to have it done by the end of March, um. But it's, yeah, the thing's due in a couple of weeks, so that's what the.
Yeah, the application.
So if, um, so we can direct staff to, um, to look into that fund, make that appointment and have that conversation. Um, if, now, I, I'm super familiar with this kind of thing, because I, I work in tourism, and if you would like me to be on that call or even. We can talk about it after, Linda, um, I don't talk about it here, but if you'd like, if I, you know, you need support with that. Just talk to me about it and we'll, we'll talk, we'll, we'll talk about something, cause I, I think this is a really good opportunity for us to get that plan done over the winter. And then be able to get some capital, maybe have, have a plan in mind, so this, we'll call it Marina waterfront Nipigan. Marina waterfront development plan.
Yeah.
Um, and then look into the, the funding to get such a plan done.
Does that cover doing some repairs?
No, there's no capital, no capital, it's just the plan, it's just for development.
Okay.
Yeah, but this would help us to get some capital later on, and have a plan for what we would like to do down there too, so. Okay.
I'd just see maybe a. Community meeting.
Yeah, and during the winter.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, that, that's probably something that a consultant would, but we have to.
No pressure.
Um, okay. Multi-year accessibility plan, this is to, resolution two oh one, twenty twenty-three, moved by councillor Hart, seconded by councillor Westtaver. That this council hereby approves the township of Nipigon five-year multi-year accessibility plan from twenty. That this council hereby approves the township of Nipigon five-year multi-year accessibility plan from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight.
You, you didn't pass a resolution for number six?
No, there, there is no resolution for that. Should we have a resolution for that, or is it just a direction to staff? Um, maybe, maybe direction to staff, and then once at the next council meeting, which is next week. We can do a resolution to officially. Submit an application. Um, that this council hereby proves the township of Nipigon five-year multi-year accessibility plan from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight. Any discussion?
We gotta report on any accessibility issues that are in the present right now. Has the council ever done that, or?
Well. Uh. Yes, yeah, the Shane guy did go around and visited our, our. Buildings and we got a good idea, like for the most part, our public buildings are pretty good, but there is, oh. Uh, the NIPJRTS has the wheelchair accessible door, but it wasn't turned on and, and like stuff like that, right? So it's just being definitely more aware, um, and then like even the supplemental could use word, but so we, uh. We've made a list of things that we would like to address, and, um, but this is good because. We do need to do like a, a yearly update to what's going on, so then that way, you're. Well, number one is ninety, if so. Something that we absolutely have to, uh, but at number two, it just keeps you. More aware of, uh, because, you know, time goes by quick and, and sometimes things get pushed aside, so to keep us more on topic of things. Obviously, moving forward, um, anytime you're looking at reconstruction, our renovating stuff, it's always a top priority as well.
I just had a question about the little, um, just real quick, the, the questionnaire at the end, so in what, what sort of way would you be distributing that? Is that like available here, is that given out?
So it, there will be hard copies here.
Okay.
It's also gonna be on the website, and uh, we'll just make, make mention to a two on Facebook occasionally.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're all in favor?
Yep.
And Carrie. Okay, so, um. This is resolution. Twenty, two oh two, sorry. Twenty twenty-three, moved by councillor Westtaver, seconded by councillor McKenzie, that this council do now resolve into closed session under the authority of eighty paragraph two thirty-nine, two F four. Or sorry, two F, we're to get work on, Municipal Act twenty-two thousand one, SO two thousand one, C twenty-five is amended. In order to receive advice, that is subject to physical, is their client privilege, and B, paragraph two three nine, two B, of the same legislation in order to address personal matters of odor identifiable in the rules.